Okay, we are out of recess and I want to thank Vice Chair Gerard for chairing the meeting in my absence while I was at a Juvenile Welfare Board meeting. And now we are very fortunate to have our own Gay Lancaster here to talk to us about the Contractor Licensing Board. And thank you for taking the challenge on again.
It's my pleasure. And I know it feels like Groundhog Day to some of you. To the best of my ability, I will catch you up on the statistics. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The Contractor Licensing Department has 12 FTEs and that represents less than 1% of your entire county workforce. It is charged with the Regulation, Licensing, Investigation, Code Interpretation and Adoption, as well as Education and Support and Protecting Public Safety. That's what's laid out statutorily for the organization. It's a new department since July 2018 and it supports the PCCLB or Pinellas County Construction Licensing Board, and that became a dependent special district as of that date last year, July 1st, 2018. The bulk of the work you hear most about is the licensing of contractors who work in the county. There are almost 7,000 state-registered contractors, there are 1,500 county-licensed contractors, and there are 800 journeymen who occupy five classes of journeymen. We offer reciprocity with other counties and we provide specialty licensing of which there are a number of categories. We also license and register those contractors. The state contractors are registered. They get their licensing from the state of Florida, but they are registered in the county. And the most important thing about that is that the county assures they are appropriately insured, and that gives you the comfort that you're protecting public safety by being aware that they are duly insured for their employees and for liability.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Just a quick question on that one.
Yes, sir.
What level of checking do we do on the workers' comp? Is it just that they have some, or do we actually go out and see that they have it categorized, some for clerical, some for fieldwork? You know, do we actually go to that level of screening?
I would have to look at that carefully and tell you. I do know that annually, we assure that they carry workers' compensation coverage for the people working in the field.
Okay.
I couldn't assure you at this point in time that we know whether their clerical employees are covered, but I must assume so. If they're on the payroll and receive a W-2, then they have to be covered by workers' compensation.
Yeah, I just...
And they're cheap, cheaper.
Right, well, that's the thing. I had a friend who had a company that large insurance companies would hire them. They would go, actually go out to site and verify, you say you have 35 in the field and, or 35 clerical and five in the field, to make sure that they were lined up so that they were paying the right rates.
Right.
Just curiosity, that's all.
Yeah. My husband's a casualty property guy and the last thing you want to do is under-insure a client because when the rain comes, you know, when things happen, then that's when everybody gets upset. So it's important, and it's really the job of the agent to make that assurance, but it's our job to make sure that the contractor is carrying the coverage for his field workers. And the agent provides that just, provides that assurance. So moving ahead, the complaints that were investigated last year, the administrative complaints are the ones against licensed contractors, and there were almost 2,000 complaints made against licensed contractors in calendar year 2018. And that also includes permit violations, which are numerous. So it's not just all bad stuff and complaints by citizens, but a lot of this are when they failed to close out a permit or failed to pull one for the work. So that would be a number of that. Yes, sir.
These, there's 12, you said, they're all, they're all registered, supposed to be, right? The state-licensed and the county-licensed.
Yes.
You register all of them and keep track of the insurance?
We do.
Okay. And would you say that we, 50% that are actually insured, 100%? How are we doing on that? I mean, when, when somebody comes to somebody's house and says, "I am licensed and I am insured," obviously you can ask for that proof.
You should.
Yeah, but more than likely, if they are licensed, they are insured.
If we have given them a renewal, we have assured that they have the proper liability and workers' compensation coverage.
And I'm sure you're chasing that sometimes.
Well, if you encounter work in the field, or if there's a complaint made, that happens. They are doing a lot of field work now, since July.
Right.
We have field investigators, which is nice. And when they come across a work scene, if it looks like anything's out of kilter, they will check all of those things.
But those licenses that we have, we are getting proof of insurance every year?
It's required from the agent.
Okay, thank you.
We don't reissue a license or renew their license unless that proof is in hand.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. And you can see that the number of complaints investigated have jumped considerably in calendar year 18 with almost 2,000. The unlicensed contractors, since the calendar year began, began from July, excuse me, let me back up a minute, from the initiation of the organization as a department, from that date through December, there were 643 reports made of unlicensed contracting. As you can see, almost half of those are by phone, and almost 30% are investigator-initiated. Commissioner, you mentioned in the field, they're out in the field all the time. A lot is response to complaints, but they are also driving around when they're in an area, checking work that's in progress. And they come across individuals who are not licensed. We still have our website and people are complaining online, or filing complaints online, a small percentage, very little by email, some by mail, and very, very little in person. Our main traffic in the office is contractors. You can see the level of intake from July through December is pretty constant once that July date passed.
You may have said, I missed why the administrative complaints have gone up so much. I mean, since we took over, I guess, the BCC Department, the previous slide, I guess it was Slide 7.
Uh huh.
That, that jump, do you, is that just, what do you attribute that?
Well, a number of things happened. If you'll recall, for a time in 2018, the sheriff's office was still doing the field investigations, and so they, their work would account for some of that.
Okay.
So really, the only good statistics I can quote are the ones from July on, when the department really took on all of the work.
Okay, thank you.
Uh huh. And we have civil citations, which are written against the unlicensed contractors. Almost 1,000 were issued in calendar year 18, and that's a significant increase from calendar year 17. And that I attribute to having the field investigators out there at work. The other jobs, and as important that PCCLB performs, is the building code amendments. And we recently had a Board of Adjustment and Appeals meeting in which approvals were made, changes to the coastal construction line. These are applicable to all jurisdictions in Pinellas County, regardless of city boundaries. And we, the agency relocated in July, or, excuse me, I think it was October, they moved to the Star Center and have new quarters, and it's much more user-friendly in terms of the lobby. If any of you saw the old lobby, you would remember that it's very crowded and contractors had a hard time. They have different stations there and it's much more user-friendly at the Star Center for the contractors. The vehicles have been rebranded, and yes, those are not measurement lines on the car. They're actually, that's tape. We didn't have a picture of the fully wrapped vehicles, but you can't miss them. And they look very nice.
Yeah.
All the field investigators drive those vehicles. And we market and educate the public to the greatest extent possible in multiple languages, mainly English and Spanish, but I would like to see it happen in other languages as well. We do home shows, vehicle identification work, and we close permits. And I think you all pretty much are painfully familiar with most of the things that the agency does, but the work continues. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioner Welch.
Welcome back, Gay.
Thank you, sir.
Good to see you again.
Nice to see you, too.
Sorry to call you by your middle name, but I don't want to do that.
Oh, that is my middle name.
Oh, but your first name?
Is Donna.
It is. So tell me how the tech is going out there? You are going to catch up on your technology and how's that going?
But you asked that question.
Because when I took the tour, she showed me the kind of 1950's.
If I could get on my knees and beg you for Acela, I would. If it helped, I would. There has been good support from OTI, really good support. A lot of things are on SharePoint. I'm able to find things, records and information that I need. But what is really the most important thing to have happen is for the technology, the case management system to be brought into this century.
Can I follow up, Madam Chair? So you think Acela is a solution that would fit?
It's been projected to be the solution to what would fit, and...
So are we planning to implement it in that area, or is not?
I'm, I'm prayerful.
Okay. I guess I want to ask Barry when he gets back, or Jake, is it scalable? Have we looked at it?
Ryan looked at it and said it would be available and works if not in the plan.
Ryan from OIT?
OTI.
OTI?
Yep.
Okay.
He believes that we could catch up with where the big city platform is by, if we get in there pretty soon. Otherwise, I mean, you still have it, but it'll have to be later.
Because what they were using is just 1950's. I mean, it's...
I think it coincides with my birth year, pretty much.
I'm not going there.
You don't have to.
70's then.
Yes, of course.
Madam Chair, if we could follow up with that technology piece, I think that's important.
I will tell you, Commissioner, that I had a meeting with all the staff at OTI, and it was a very productive discussion. And they are saying that that is what's going to be necessary to make it come, to be fully user-friendly for both contractors and the public. And I would have to tell you, that's the most urgent need. In the meantime, the work continues and people are doing their best.
Sure.
But as you're very well aware from prior conversations, that system cannot be re-engineered.
Right. Okay.
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Long. I don't even know what to say to you. What, have you got any ballpark figure for what the cost of that would be to...
$474,000.
That's it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Don't say it.
And what they did say, Commissioner, is that it might not be all that much, that if it gets started, the Acela people usually overestimate, and it could be less. But they're projecting that it wouldn't be more.
And so if I might, Madam Chair, having that system would enable you to get caught up in terms of dollars coming in as well, would it not?
There's no question that being able to maintain the records, to process them quickly, would assure a steadier income stream. Now, to what extent, I couldn't tell you, but the projection from OTI is that it would increase the revenue stream.
Excellent. Thank you. Ms. Eggers?
Well, that was actually my question, but welcome back as well.
Thank you.
Good to have you. And the only other thing I'd say is, does this, I can't see the whole rap, does it include a phone number when they're driving around?
It does.
Thank you.
And it shows how high we would like for the contractor information to be as well. So it's, it is in a way a measuring device.
Got it.
So that we can say, this is what we'd like it to look like on your vehicle.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Yes.
Related to the software, would it be cheaper, and you might not know the answer to this, to do it while they're doing the other, the bigger piece?
It would be, according to OTI. And the important thing for me is to have it be able to interact with a department like Consumer Protection.
Right.
You know, we meet with them and we exchange information. It's so much easier to be able to do that, but we can't do it now.
Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is planning. Renee.
Vincent.
Renee.
Good afternoon, Renee Vincent, Planning Director.
Afternoon.
Oops, okay. Somebody else is driving right now. Because I'm seeing... Ah, there we go. Thank you, all right. Oh, all right, that button. Sorry, I wish I knew how to do this by now. With me today is Bruce Bussey from the Community Development Division. Helped me on the hard details with everything that they do that I don't know 100% of these days. We are 39 full-time employees, about less than 2% of the county administration workforce. We are organized across four functional areas right now. Long-range planning, which performs our comprehensive planning, special area plans, things of that nature. Community development, which is headed by Bruce Bussey. Administers our community development block grant funds and affordable housing programs. We have a redevelopment section that kind of does double duty, implementing the Lilman Community Redevelopment Area, and also provides that oversight to our municipal community redevelopment areas for their reporting requirements. And we have our land use and zoning section that really is the day-to-day administration of board of adjustment cases, special exceptions, land use and rezoning cases. We cut across kind of a broad swath of functional areas, comprehensive planning and code development, land use and administration, affordable housing, our community development projects, historic preservation, redevelopment, and then resiliency and mitigation planning as well. Some of our things done, we did complete the land development code finally, last year. It went effective January 1st of this year. And so right now, we are in the phase of really monitoring, gathering a list of issues, internal inconsistencies and things of that nature that come with a major code update. And we'll expect to do, you know, an ordinance to amend, probably later this year, to correct some of those things that we've found. But our, you know, initially, it's, the rollout seems to be going fairly smoothly, and I have to thank Development Review Services and their team for really stepping up with all the training and getting everybody on board to help with, you know, just rolling out a new code. Just a little bit of numbers, last year, we processed six Historic Preservation Board cases, 124 Board of Adjustment cases, and that I want to focus on a bit because that content has always been a very high caseload. The new land development code, if it's an early indicator, it rolled out January 1st. For the March Board of Adjustment for that deadline, we had zero applications for Board of Adjustments cases. So that's, hasn't happened for years. So we're hoping that the code is working and that we've corrected enough things that were constantly being, causing variance applications to arise and/or given staff ability to adjust things administratively. So that seems to be positive. 39 local planning agency cases, those are zoning and zoning and land use cases. Last year, we completed a historic survey of bridges in Pinellas County. Of those 40 that were surveyed, 12 are potential, potentially eligible for a national register nomination, so we'll work with the Historic Preservation Board on, do we want to go forward with those, what might be the best candidates? And we also continue with our historic, implemented, implemented and now continuing our historic markers program. We did receive our STAR community rating. We are a three-star community. About the same time that we were completing our certification with that, that merged with the U.S. Green Building Council. So we are also now lead certified, a lead certified community to the U.S. Green Building Council, and that will be the continuing program that we will continue to follow our recertification efforts with. It's, it's in a beta test as we speak, so STAR really went away.
Dead.
It did go away. And so the green building certification, it's a little less broad than STAR. The STAR communities took in a lot of social equity evaluation that the lead program really doesn't. So that's, but in all other respects, it's pretty similar, so. In the Lilman Community Redevelopment Area, we implemented a residential and non-residential improvement grants, and we awarded last year about $132,000 worth of funds. Those were for, three of those were businesses, the rest were residential improvement grants. So, and those were matching grants. So we invested $132,000 and they invested $132,000. And those were external, exterior types of improvements, so a lot of roofs, doors, paints, you know, windows, driveways, fences, things of that nature. And we also coordinated with the Parks Department in the development of the Ramonades Nury Master Park Plan. We invested a little over $1 million through our community development block grant program through, into direct facility renovations, as well as funding operations for various not-for-profits that provide public services. Through our affordable housing programs, we invested about $6.6 million into various homeowner programs, rental housing construction, and short-term rental assistance, and that garners about a $22 million investment on the private side. A nice signature project to talk about, this is the Palms of Pinellas, 92 units of really workforce housing. It's 100% capped at, or 120% of area median income, and then 20% of the units are further capped at 50% of area median income. So it's a nice mixed project, really hitting that workforce need, but also hitting that really, what's the word I'm looking for? Cost-burdened group. Yes, ma'am?
This is the one we did with Housing Authority?
Yes, this is the Housing Authority. And it has around, about 2 point, I think 2.2 million dollars of land assembly, home and BP funds invested in it.
What's the location?
Oh...
Belcher.
Belcher, south of Olmerton.
Yeah, Belcher and Olmerton, southeast.
South of Olmerton.
Thank you. Through our housing development partners, a big one is Habitat for Humanity, we have, through our partnership with them, they have been able to acquire over 100 lots, around around 100 lots that are in various stages of construction for single-family homes in the area. Those are in the Dansville area, as well as, see, Dansville, Gooden Crossing, and then there's an incorporated Pinellas Park area.
And 62nd Avenue.
Yes. We also, with our partnership with Bowley, developed a 21 units of special living, and we are also finished up our request for negotiations, a second request for negotiations for the remaining Dansville lots. So we're hoping to actually get those lots into both market and affordable housing development over the course of this, of this year. We gave you a pretty good update recently on the comprehensive plan, so I won't belabor this too much, but we will continue our update and really looking to interrelate all those elements of the comprehensive plan. We completed the results-neutral policy consolidation that took all those 1,100-plus policies of the plan, reduced them down to around 300 without really changing intent or meaning. And we also completed the guiding principles and shopped that out to the public to get input, make sure that we're addressing the things that the community wants us to address. So now we're really developed into working with the departments at looking at those existing policies and new guiding principles, what's working, what isn't working, what needs to change as we move this toward, you know, really a wholesale update of the comprehensive plan, that at the end of, the end of this process will be modernized, it will really focus on interrelated, and, you know, focusing on redevelopment, but also protecting what's good about Pinellas County, making sure we don't lose that. And then having, hopefully having it really be a web-based document as opposed to the static PDFs that are really difficult to read. We want it to be easy for the public and really easy for, easy for us as administrators to use the plan.
And this, well, it's the planning to stay document now?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Okay.
We do want to refocus this year on the U.S. 19 corridor. We've been in a bit of a holding pattern since we did the initial market analysis of that. We were waiting for Tarpon Springs to kind of catch up. They were doing the same thing, as well as the city of Largo, but we do want to go ahead and move forward with, working with Tarpon, Largo, and Clearwater's ahead of us on this, to go ahead and put in a multimodal corridor plan that really anticipates, you know, the changes that are coming with the flyovers as those continue to, you know, march north, and really, you know, the changing, the changing needs from a redevelopment perspective.
What's the bottom, the southern end of that? Where does it stop?
For us, it, it will stop with Clearwater. So that's...
Okay.
I don't know, I don't know an exact cross street of where that stops and where it picks up for us, but we're, we're looking...
Mostly the, yeah.
Yeah, the incorporated piece. We're working, you know, we're working with Clearwater and looking at what they've already done in terms of their multimodal corridor and form-based code. So we want to, we don't want to do something drastically different. We want it to be uniform through the municipalities. It just makes it easier for developers down the way. The next decennial census is upon us. April 1st, 2020 is National Census Day. I'm hoping that I'll be back in front of you, hopefully in the next month, with an update on the formation of a Complete Account Committee, what that will look like, the structure, the substructure for the subcommittees, and how that will, how we will be participating in that. Communications is our partner on that, and they're, they're working on a communication strategy for that over the next, you know, year as we roll out to the 2020 census. We're hoping to complete two form-based codes this year, following on the downtown master plan for Palm Harbor. The master plan really serves as an activity center for the downtown Palm Harbor area. The form-based code marries up with that, that plan, and enables us to guide new development and really responds to what we heard from the public. They wanted additional retail opportunities, but we, that needs to be in the right context. So we need to look at our plan and make sure that it does two things. It gives certainty to the developers and clears a path for them to develop, but it also certainly on the, on the community side, that what comes out of the end of that pipeline is what they want. So that form-based code really enables that. Similarly, for the Lilman CRA, we want, we're also in progress of developing a form-based code for that entire area as well. And really, it's the, it's the same, same thing. We want to recognize, you know, the unique areas of Lilman. Where do we want to focus redevelopment? Where do we want to preserve certain things? And this also marries up with the Linking Lilman Plan. I'm not sure if you've seen the video that was just released. I'll talk about the Linking Lilman Plan in just a second, but those two things really marry up together for, you know, how we want things to develop, and then Linking Lilman addresses all of those identified connection points, sidewalk gaps, trail needs, you know, bike and pedestrian safety needs throughout Lilman.
Can you make sure we send that, that link to the video?
Yes. Is that, is it, is it up on YouTube?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. We'll make, we'll make a link. It's, we can get to it through our planning department, planning department page, but I'll send it to you.
Thank you.
And a little more on the Linking Lilman Plan, as I said, it looks at necessary multimodal improvement, safety, connectivity, accessibility, really focusing on completing gaps. It can be very hard to get around in Lilman if you're trying to get from one, one major part of Lilman to another, because there's incomplete road, incomplete road segments. There's a lot of gaps in sidewalks. So this, this draft plan is largely complete. We had an outreach effort last week. It was very well attended. It was very well received by the public. So now we've got to follow through. This will serve as a document that we can use to program CIP dollars in the future to address these, all of these projects that have been identified. Some are very, you know, identified as quick wins, and then others are short-term, mid-term, and long-term projects. We'll be doing a, we received a grant from the state to do an historic resources survey for Lilman, and this goes a little deeper than just, you know, what, what structures are old enough to be historic and what, what should we, you know, classify as structures to be preserved. It really takes a deeper look at the, at the history of Lilman, and, you know, what are the significant families and the historic legacy businesses and things of that nature, things that really tell the story of Lilman that we don't want to lose as we move towards redevelopment, because what we don't want to see happen is just complete, you know, gentrification over time where you really lose what Lilman is. Some significant projects underway in the CRA. Greenway Lofts is a project that Contemporary Housing Authority, CHAF, is, is doing. That's the old Broke site, old Broke, the old Broke School site. That is a mix of affordable as well as market rate units. The overall, if you call the Lilman Heights, that's the D and D properties that... The overall, if you call the Lilman Heights, that's the D and D properties that we acquired through the Housing Finance Authority, we're, we're at a point where we want to try to go out, hopefully this summer, with some sort of either a letter of interest or request for negotiations to look at that, that seven-acre-plus site from a redevelopment perspective and gauge what the interest is for both, you know, housing, maybe some office, some mixed-use type developments, so that really needs to be kind of a three-party venture between the community redevelopment area from some of the mixed-use piece of that, as well as the county and the Housing Finance Authority for the, for the housing component of that, so we're not sure what we'll get out of that, but it's time to float that out and see, see how we can move on that. We also have, again, this was, working with a developer who has acquired the Wood Acres Mobile Home Park, and that has like 36 units in it, that's in very poor shape, they met with us on how they can take advantage of that Mobile Home Park redevelopment ordinance, so we're, we're working to see if, what we can do to help them, ultimately, they may just go the route of just putting in new one-for-one and cleaning up the park replacements, but it's nice to see that there's a, we're getting a small path forward in these mobile home redevelopments where we're, and we're, they're, they're being, we're, we're keeping those, those units as affordable as they're being replaced, so that's a nice project to watch, and we'll keep you informed as to how that goes. We continue to implement those same non-residential and non-residential improvement grants, we're continuing that again this year, along with a demolition program and a land acquisition program, again, all of that funded through the tax increment financing. At the Lilman Exchange, I think you're well, you're aware of the partners that we have now, the tenants there, and that's somewhat stable at the moment, we do intend to go out with an additional letter of interest to really target, with that remaining space, the partner tenants that, for those, to provide those services that are gaps right now, really we're thinking workforce development, you know, and education needs, and to that end, along with that, we want to partner that with an incubator program that will help fund, whether it's the rent for them, or operations, or building improvements that might be needed for one of those programs to come in, so we're trying to provide some incentives to get those tenants in.
So what kind of space do we still have there?
Oh, I knew you were going to ask me that, and I don't have that answer, I, I want to say it's around 10,000 square feet, it's, it's not a lot left, so that's why we're trying to be selective and make sure that we get, get in the, the right partners in there, and really that workforce development piece is key. The exchange also really is, is blossoming, it's become quite a mid-county venue for events and programs, the, the YMCA held a Christmas event there where disadvantaged families could come and shop for, for presents for, for their children, like if you get a Christmas tree, we, they, a lot of organizations are using it for mid-county meetings, we had a, made the census, our first census meeting there, FEMA used it to, for floodplain, to educate the community about the new floodplain maps, community, emergency management, and Meals on Wheels, and Duke Energy partnered, and they had, they provided emergency kits and meal, and hot meals, so like 1,000 seniors in the area last year, that was a really kind of a neat, neat program. So it's, it's getting a lot of attention, and we continue to try to promote it as a, as a venue for those types of events. We are, we currently, I know this is a hot topic of conversation, we don't currently have open gym hours at the gymnasium, we are working through the logistics and, of that with risk management as, because when you open that up, you've got to have some type of supervision, you've got to, and who can provide that, and so that's a work in progress, but we, we, we've heard the public, and we know that that's desirous out there, so we're, we're working to get that implemented, at least on a trial basis, and see how it And we're also, we're also in process of building out that, the community computer lab that will be available for anybody that needs access, you know, they can, they can hold classes there, but they're also available for general public, like you can go to a library, you know, when you need to use a computer for jobs, job hunting, or anything of that nature. This year, we are required to update our five-year local mitigation strategy, which is an all-hazards mitigation plan, and that is a multi-jurisdictional plan with all 24 municipalities, and the county pretty much takes lead on that, but we have to have that plan adopted and approved by FEMA, and that allows us entry into any, to apply for any grant programs for FEMA mitigation, flood mitigation, and grants and things of that nature, so that's a, a major, and again, this is another document that's, this is in, it's about its fifth iteration, and it's still a, kind of a, a brick of a document, it's, so it's another one that we really want to have an online presence with it, so that the other municipalities can access it, as well as the general public, if, if you're familiar with the county's new floodplain management site that Public Works put out, if, we're, something similar to that, it's just a more of a, a more useful tool. We're continuing with the Restore Act sea level rise and vulnerability assessment, this is, this has been a, a long project, and it's, hopefully we're going to get through most of it this year, and a little bit into fiscal, into 2020. The, the Geo Database of Infrastructure is nearing completion, right now the draft tidal maps are being developed, so at the end of this project, we will have a countywide database of critical assets, as well as at points in time going out decades, looking at how sea level rise will affect just general tidal flooding, so just non-rainy day of, you know, tidal flooding events, as well as storm surge, and then further on that, we can, it'll allow us to look at certain types, if you want to do a mitigation on a particular asset, what's the return on investment down the line, so it'll be a, a very useful tool moving forward for, for planning purposes. And then lastly, this is, this year, we're really ramping up finally with our Health and All Policies Initiative, I say our, we're a partner, the Department of Health, Pinellas County Department of Health received a grant through the, the Foundation for Health of St. Petersburg to, over a three-year period, to, to implement what's called a Health and All Policies Initiative, and it, it's kind of exactly what it sounds like, really looking at, at the local level, through all your departments, all of your various policy documents, and looking at those with a health lens to, how can we, how can we adjust to improve over the long haul, the whole long haul, community health. There, the three initial partners are Pinellas County, City of St. Petersburg, and Pinellas Park, and we are, that, that grant is funding a planning position in all three of those municipalities, so I'm in process of interviewing and hiring right now for that position, so we have an action team, and we're, we're finally really now digging into the nuts and bolts of what the three-year program is going to be, and educating, you know, at the various local government levels, all the department heads, the ACAs, anybody that we can, you know, corral into this training program, to really educate on health and all policies, social determinants of health, health impact assessments, and how we can use those moving forward to just improve overall community health, so that's an exciting new initiative, and looking forward to that one. And that concludes my presentation.
I would say you all have a lot on you.
Yes, ma'am, we do, but it's all front stuff.
I'm impressed, I mean, you know, to get the code done, and then be able to now, you know, do, updating the planning to stay to plan Pinellas, the Lilman Exchange, the Health and All Policies, the All Hazards Plan, I mean.
There's a lot going on, it's, you know, and I, I didn't ask all of my, my managers to come and be introduced, you see them on a fairly regular basis, you see Glenn, you see Scott, so Bruce, I need help with the numbers with Bruce sometimes, so I have, I have to ask Bruce everywhere I go, so they do a fabulous job, I have a really great team, and they're, it's just a joy to come to work every day with them, and I thank you for your support.
Please extend our thanks, I mean, I think we thank them when they're here before, at different meetings, but I'm very appreciative, this is one area that I have felt needed a lot of attention, and you've certainly all given it the attention it deserves in order to move us towards that redevelopment and uplifting of our entire county.
Thank you, I appreciate it, and I very much appreciate the support that we get from you as, as the board, thank you.
Mr. Justice?
Just wanted to, I wasn't able to go to the event last week for the Linking Lilman, the, the one concern I've heard from different places is 54th Avenue and the Complete Streets.
Yes, sir, that is the one contention piece, exactly.
And I've, I've heard it from not only folks just anecdotally concerned about, you know, traffic, but also from the fire department as far as access to the vehicles and things like that, so, just wanted to give you an opportunity to touch on that.
We, we, that's the one area of that plan that we, it's, it's about 50/50, really, I mean, you've, you have the concerns of some people, like, they don't want to see kind of that road diet, but, you know, because of, you know, they, they feel that that's just going to make traffic worse, and then on the other side, you will hear folks say, I, you know, it's not safe, I can't walk, I can't bike, I can't cross it, so trying to find that balance is going to be a real delicate issue, you know, nothing is set in stone yet, yet with 54th, so we continue to, I'm, I'm sure we're going to do some more outreach before we really come to any conclusion on what we might ultimately do with that road, but it's, it's a challenge, that, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Welch?
I want to echo those concerns, I can't remember if we talked about that at Fort Pinellas or not, but this is the lane reduction down to one lane each way?
That, that is one, there's, there's three or four, you know, iterations of what can happen there inside the existing right-of-way, so you can perhaps go to, you know, one lane and one center turn, you know, one lane each direction, and one center turn lane, and then have a really nice, you know, off-street bike-ped paths, so there, there's a lot of different ways that, that you can, you can cut that, but we've got to find the right balance.
Yeah, that seems to be a popular design, I know they talked about doing that on 22nd Gulfport, had the same kind of pushback, talking about doing that on US-19 South, now there it might actually work, because the interstate's a stones throw away, so, but I did.
And you also have six lanes there to go to Fort.
Exactly, exactly.
It's, it's a challenge, and, and, you know, my past experience with these types of things, and when I, and my other, the other jurisdiction that I worked in, you know, it can be, it can be really challenging, and oddly enough, after about, you know, a year or two, and everybody gets used to it, it's the greatest thing since sliced bread, so it's, you know, it, sometimes it's just overcoming, overcoming the initial resistance, but.
Let me ask you, you taking comments on Linking Lilman now?
Um, the, you know, I just checked the, I don't think it's up on open Pinellas right now, but we will, we will get something up there, yes, sir.
Okay, let us know, please.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have, I put this on the agenda yesterday, as you know, the MOU for Tampa Bay Water, with Commissioner Eggers and Peters going to a meeting on Monday, I thought it was just beneficial for us to kind of review everything and, and be knowledgeable about what was going on, so.
Do we need to wait for Commissioner Peters to come back?
We can.
Well, while we're waiting for her, may I just bring to your attention something that is beginning to be of concern to me, and I'm sorry that Lourdes isn't here, I know she had a death in her family, so please extend our sympathies to her, Della, but I'm a little wondering what's going on with our hospital communities, given that the CEO of two top people at Bayfront are no longer there, the CEO at Northside is no longer there, the CEO at Largo Med is no longer there, and it seems to me that we ought to at least have a discussion with somebody to make sure that we know what's going on, maybe Dr. Cho has some more information that he could give to us?
I would say, Lourdes, let's ask Lourdes to be in touch, I know that they have relationships with the hospitals, and I think we want to be careful, because they're obviously not-for-profits and, or for-profits that stand on their own, and so, but I, we want to make sure that we have stable relationships, and that we know who the, know who our contacts should be, and we'll, we'll follow up on that.
Thank you.
Is there anything else, I mean, it is kind of BCC, it was BCC discussion, is there anything on any of the department presentations, or anything else that you, okay, all right, so let's go now to the MOU for Tampa Bay Water, and, you know, I was contacted by former Commissioner Susan LaValle, and, you know, talked, and then looked at some of the issues, and then talked to Don Crowell to look from a legal standpoint, and so I just felt like we needed to have a discussion about this, I think one of the salient points was that, you know, is this MOU in conflict with the, with the intergovernmental agreement for Tampa Bay Water, in that intergovernmental agreement, the member governments have to each vote on probably substantial changes, I'm just, I'm not probably using the right legal language, but, so anyway, Don and I kind of had that conversation, and then we just thought we should ask Megan, and if you have anything that you want to add, or this is, or if anybody wants to make, ask questions or comments at this point, is it, there's really, you know, I don't have any set pathway for this, I just want, I just felt we needed to discuss it.
Sure, I agree.
Can I, can I just say something? I mean, having served on there for the last two years, they've been talking about this for what, at least a year?
Well, we've been at this MOU agreement about two years.
Probably two, almost two years, and it's really hard to know how to represent the county sitting there, because it's, it's a big mess.
Well, I think, I think.
And I, you know, I think it's, sometimes you think maybe Tampa's trying to explode the agreement, and other times we think, hmm, maybe not, maybe it's not such a bad deal, so I appreciate it, I've gotten the presentation already, but not that I understood at all.
It is, it is, it is by far the most complicated board, I think, that exists in the county, because, you know, just water and sources, and, you know, I was there when we went to, from chlorine to chloranamines, and I am not, was not a science major, so trying to understand disinfectant policies was like beyond me, but, you know, we're lucky to have very qualified staff that can help advise us in these matters. Commissioner Eggers?
Just a couple things, first, your point about the six governments are a party to this, in the inter-local agreement, the MOU that's being proposed is between the City of Tampa and Tampa Bay Water, and they did their best to come up with a way to deal with it that way versus taking it back to each of the member governments to get a vote by that government, and so they've come up with this MOU, which, you know, as they've developed it, created a lot of questions, probably there's more questions than answers, so we've been asked to sign on to this, which basically admits to the fact that it is a regional benefit project, so that they can get funding from SWIFTMUD to do their next phase of their work, and frankly, the more questions there are, makes you feel less certain that there's regional benefits, because as you look into each of them, you find shortcomings, you put that right there, and then the fact that our water typically is a little more expensive than other waters, Tampa's water, is primarily because we're drought-proofing the entire region, so we've had, we have more product, multiple types of product, whether it's saltwater conversion, whether it's surface water, whether it's any, any of our well water, so there's multiple sources, and we have to make sure that we have water for everybody at all times, at the worst of times, and that includes Tampa, so they, they continue to have that ability to produce a certain amount, and if they have a drought and they can't get it, we provide that water, and that was going to get more and more as time went on. So the fact that, that we want to bless this as a regional project gives concern to some of us, that it could be opening the door for precedent for other organizations, other member governments, to look for potentially their own type of water supply, and as they take less water from Tampa Bay Water, their piece of the puzzle for paying the debt that we have goes down, and the rest of us proportionally end up paying more, so, not that anybody's talking about doing their own water supply, but we just have to be careful as we enter into these kind of agreements, when truthfully, probably for the next couple of years, and then probably five years, and then probably 12 years, you'll continue to learn more and more about whether this is really a benefit, and yet we've opened the door to say, yes, it is, comma, if it all works out, and I just think we have to be so, so careful, so I've just, I've, I've been trying to keep that open mind to. so I've just, I've, I've been trying to keep that open mind to, to, to hear things, because they, City of Tampa's methods have created a lot of anxiety, that, you know, they've tried to go around the system, they've tried to do everything. Their, their rationale for, for benefits seems to change a little bit. They're not quite like they're originally purported to be. And so, you know, you just, you get a little bit skeptical about the things that are being presented. So we have to be careful, and I'm trying not to be too that way, but at the same time, listen to what they're trying to, what they're trying to come up with. But frankly, I just have a lot of problems and a lot of questions right now. So come Monday, again, I'll listen to what's going on, and I'm going to ask a lot of pointed questions of our staff, who I think needs to come to the table a little stronger. Staff, not our staff, here, our staff, Tampa Bay Water.
Tampa Bay Water, okay.
Because they really represent the technical aspects of this business, and whether they're concerned about the short-term, long-term, and viability of that organization by anything that's being done. And we've had a legal perspective, strongly think it's okay, but there's a lot of operational perspectives, and people that used to be involved in Tampa Bay Water, like the research director, Allison Adams, who's been there forever, who have great concerns with it. So, so I'm going to go with an open mind on Monday, my, prior to this meeting being called, of course, but with an open mind, but really leaning towards not accepting the MOU because of that. Now, uh, yesterday, we heard late in the day that a week ago, they had made, the City of Tampa had made an, an application to the state through a, a bill to get the money that they needed for the design phase that's coming, because everybody keeps asking, well, why are we rushing this? Let's just let things unfold. Well, they want to get that SWF MUD money, and not their own money for the design phase. And so they have to have a local matching source. And, uh, so they've gone to the state, apparently, to get, try to get that matching piece. I had tongue-in-cheek a little bit, said, well, if it's that important, why doesn't Tampa Bay Water just give them the money? And then we don't have to commit to any kind of perceptive acceptance of this being a regional project. So it's just, it's just very murky and kind of moving and in different ways, and certainly, um, it's not a convers, it's not an environmental discussion. It's, it, it isn't. I mean, because we all believe that we need to protect our environment. It's really a, a business model that's in place, and they want essentially, I'd say, their cake and eat it too. So which means they're going to want the insurance, even after all this hap, if this were to happen and they were to have their own water, additional water through that, we're still going to be their backup. So they're not letting go of that either. So we're still providing an insurance policy. So people say, well, you guys are, your water's more expensive, and it is, but there's a reason for that, because it always has to flow, no matter what. And if Tampa's doesn't flow for a reason, guess who steps in? Tampa Bay Water. So, I mean, I, it's been very difficult to kind of sort through some of the politics of it, but also some of the science of it, and, and so there's a lot of, a lot of pieces in motion. So I just wanted to say, kind of lay that out there.
And, um, and we can get into this more later, but the point that you made, actually about Tampa Bay Water being a potential funding source, might actually be insurance. Might actually be a good way to go, just to, um, you know, have skin in the game and be able to, um-
Well, up until last month, or two months ago, we're, we're looking at, we have to go through this every once in a while, coming up-
At other projects.
Yeah, other projects, other long-range water projects, so that we can, over that twenty-year horizon, make sure that we have enough water. Well, one of those projects was actually the TAP project, run by, operated by Tampa Bay Water. And so we were going to be responsible for pulling the water out of the ground and processing it as a potential water source. Well, we've, when we, when push came to shove at that meeting in December, we basically said, well, you guys, we're not going to give you that reclaimed water, the City of Tampa said. So now, all of a sudden, we don't have the reclaimed water to do the Tampa Bay Water project, or to do the, um, yeah, the TAP project. And so that project just dropped from our list as a, as a, so if it was really about an environmental project and keeping the water out of the bay, really, then why would they want to fund the money to do that? Why wouldn't they let it be spread out over this organization to do it the right way? They want to be self-sustaining, they want the cheaper water, and they want the insurance policy. So essentially, that, to me, that's what it seems to come down to. They would probably say it's a lot more complicated than that, but-
Well, we, you know, when we had Tampa Bay Water come here, you know, I thought we'd had a good discussion and, and, you know, felt some more security in all of this, but I guess my other question on the MOU is, if this, is this, does this cement this, or is there a second shot at it by Tampa Bay Water as it's being produced and-
There are times along the way where we have an option to get out of the MOU.
You do?
Yes, if they don't perform. There, it's, I mean, you, you, probably Megan will know more of the specifics, but there'll be opportunities along the way to get out of that agreement. Um, but I suspect as time goes on, they're going to know more about the viability of this. There's still a lot of issues with regard to getting permits.
Right.
There's not been done in the state before, so they're still working on that system to allow permitting for that kind of activity. So that's a major problem. There's a lot of questions with Tampa, SWF MUD, and how much money they're lending, or they're lending, that they're matching on this project, and the inability for the rest of the region to get SWF MUD money, because that's going to all go towards the City of Tampa's project. So there's some of those questions that some of us have. So there's a number of issues, I think, that are being raised, that I just think there's too many questions. And I, and I certainly have a, have this, my whole thing is about the, the future and the viability of this regional model and this, you know, and the water to our county, period. That's what it comes down to. And, and frankly, you know, there's five organizations, five governments that are very vested in this effort, and very vested in Tampa Bay Water. And there's one that has a unique relationship by the original agreement-
Always has.
Which all of us newbies that get on there have to kind of get through, um, but at some point, you have to say, beyond that eighty-two million gallons a day that they're allowed to produce, we're it. And if you want to go down a different path, then it, you know, it's just a different, it's a different way to look at things. And I, and so I just, again, I think it's good that we have this conversation, and, uh, I think City of, City of St. Petersburg had a, I don't, they call it a special meeting, a meeting in the ra-
Committee of the Home?
Yes, thank you. Where they actually, they gave direction to their representative how they wanted them to vote.
What was the direction?
Uh, to vote, uh, to not support it.
Yeah.
And so that, that's, we, we haven't done that, and to my-
I've been pretty uncomfortable with that.
So we've been, so it's really the two folks that represent Tampa Bay Water, which is Kathleen and me now, um, that would be voting on this, period, because it is an inter-local agreement item. Although I did make a comment last month that maybe we ought to take it back to each of our boards and get a vote. And of course, that sets everybody in a tizzy, because it'll take time, you know, and, um, there, there's just a lot of things going on, and, and lately, I've, I've been told that there was a beautiful report that was done that we just got a hold of about a month ago, and we're trying to develop questions for it, and they really haven't had those questions delivered to City of Tampa to answer. Now, those are really technical questions, and, uh, but I think they're real in terms of where are we right now as far as this being a project that's got validity to it, um, and whether we should really be putting a rubber stamp on it being a, a, a regional project. I'm not sure, SWF MUD could look at that agreement and say, they're saying it's a, a, a regional project, but every single one of those benefits are yet to be determined, but I don't think they really care. I think, I, if you're listening, SWF MUD, I didn't mean it that way. But what I, I think they really, are really looking for us to rubber stamp that it's a regional project, to give them the okay to give matching dollars. You know, I don't think they're getting into, they're not going to dig into the agreement and say, well, that's not, that's not yet, not yet, not yet. So it's really kind of in our hands to, to say whether it's a regional project or not. So, anyway, you can correct me, Megan.
Kathleen, I don't know whether you want to say anything.
I'm happy, but why don't we let Megan talk?
Sure.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Megan Ross, utilities director at Penneles County. As Commissioner Eggers stated, this MOU was developed between Tampa Bay Water and the city as a means to allow the city to progress with the TAP project within the boundaries of the inter-local agreement. So that was the intent. Essentially, uh, in the workshop that took place in January with all the Tampa Bay Water board members, it was reviewed, and, and there were some different language proposed from the different legal councils and member governments on, um, some of the provisions to be added to the MOU. Specifically, one of the main ones was the opt-out provision. And, um, if I could offer just a recommendation at this point in time, the opt-out provision that was provided by our, uh, county attorney, which didn't end up making it into this new MOU draft, was more of a vote to affirm the project again in one year, because from the standpoint of everyone still has questions as to the benefits, and even from the City of Tampa, the feasibility portion still has a ways to go. And so if the MOU could be established where allowing them to go forth and get SWF MUD funding to begin some of the feasibility, come back in a year and present, are the benefits still feasible, the board would have to vote to affirm that the benefits are there and would vote at that time to progress. The way the language, and I'm sure the county attorney can speak better about this than me, but the way the language is written now is more of a vote to decline rather than a vote to reaffirm. And so I think adding that language in there and changing that opt-out provision a little bit gives everyone more of a comfort that we can address this a year down the road, when we all have more information and know a little bit more about this, and we can get some of the issues addressed. So that would make some of these other comments that Tampa provided, the city provided, um, inconsequential at this time, because we're just going to continue, you know, continue with the feasibility, let's come back in a year and address the issue at that time.
I think that's actually an excellent suggestion, um, that would, you know, to be able to come back in a year to see the study of the science and the permitting and and so on. It makes sense to me, um, to offer that up, but, um, I'm sorry.
Are they able to do the whole feasibility study within a year and have results?
Well, that's a question for them. So at, at some point, hopefully in a year, they'll be farther down the road, you know? Uh, and a year later, they may come and say, well, we're not done yet, we need another two years. Well, okay, are we going to vote to keep this going, or no, that's going to take too long, we got to move ahead and get water supply established? Whatever happens in a year, that decision can be left to the Tampa Bay Water Board at that time, so. I don't know if the county attorney has anything more they want to add to that provision or-
I mean, it just seems like a reasonable request. It's, you know, we've had the discussion at the board level, and again, with Tampa Bay Water, and I think, you know, even the staff from Tampa said, we still have to do, you know, additional studies and, and permitting and et cetera, and it just seems like it would be reasonable ask. Hi, Joe.
Hi, how you doing? Yeah, I thought it was a reasonable ask, but, uh, as it worked through the other attorneys, the Hillsborough County Attorney, the Pasco County Attorney, the Newport Ritchie City Attorney, uh, the Tampa Bay Water attorneys, came up with the language that they proposed that Tampa put in. I mean, I think Commissioner Eggers and Commissioner Peters, if they wanted to, could ask again, but, you know, ultimately, this thing needs six votes to progress, and, you know, what we think is reasonable, I'm not, I can't speak for the other members whether they'll think that is reasonable or not. I mean, that's why it originally proposed, uh, a piece of language that said an affirmative vote of the board to go forward, as opposed to putting the board in the position of having to justify a negative vote. But that didn't concern the other attorneys other than St. Pete, so.
Well, I guess, I guess for me, I, I don't understand what the rush is when they have so many questions that they don't have answers to, number one. Even when they were here last month, there were lots of questions that were asked, they didn't have the answers. And number two, um, in another month, I believe, there's a whole new administration over there in the City of Tampa, and how is that going to affect going forward? We don't even know what their position is, do we? Because we don't know-
We don't know who the mayor's going to be.
We don't know who the mayor's going to be. There were several new council people that are going to be installed. I just think it's kind of a fool's errand at this point with so many things that we don't yet know. I'd be interested in Commissioner Peters' thoughts.
Um, I, my, my thoughts are similar to yours and to Commissioner Eggers. Um, I think in this new red line that they gave us, they, they put too much, not just on the one year, they put a lot of onus on Tampa Bay Water. It's not that they said, well, Tampa will be liable, and if it doesn't work, Tampa's got some responsibilities here, everything falls back on Tampa Bay Water. My other concern is if we can't compete for SWF MUD dollars, and let's say we end up getting pushed up three years into this process, well, that's three years we have not been able to work on our capacity. And we know that, uh, Southern Hillsborough County, um, desperately needs increased capacity, and that could put us three years behind. It could cost us more money, and we haven't even been able to go forward on that process because we had to sit out in the bidding process to get revenue to, to be prepared for future capacities, capacity. And with Florida's, uh, population increasing at the steady rate that it's increasing, I, I, I think it's very risky to put our expanding capacity on hold on something that may or may not work, we have no idea, and then putting that liability on, on Tampa Bay Water, I think, is irresponsible on Tampa Bay Water's part. Um, there's some other environmental, Dave said it's not an environmental thing. To me, it's still an environmental thing.
They don't know, though.
We don't, we don't know how safe it is to put it in that, that particular aquifer. We don't know if they're going to have the ability to pull out the pharma and biologics that are in the water that would now be in the river. So there's way lots of even environmental issues that we don't know. And so, uh, so Mayor Buckhorn called me this morning, I told him I wasn't there yet, um, and, and then I had a lot of questions. His staff wants me with me tomorrow, so they know what my issues are ahead of time, so, you know, if they can answer my questions tomorrow and get me down the road, that might be a different story, but so far, so far, I'm, I, and, and then on top of a new administration within the City of Tampa has, gives me great concern.
Commissioner Welch?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I'll work backwards, I'll read my colleagues' statements. Can we get Brian maybe to look at if any of the leading candidates over there have made a statement or stated a position on this? They've had a couple of debates, I'm wondering if that question has been asked to them. It might be something we can just pull from the internet.
I don't know.
Um, because that could change the direction. Um, I, I agree with, I think Megan's recommendation was a good one as well, Madam Chair. Um, come back in a year when you've got more information, hopefully, hopefully that feasibility study is going forward and answered some of those environmental and other questions. So I would support doing that. Um, yeah, it hasn't been handled in a collaborative way, and that gives you some pause. Um, it seemed, it could have been a lot more straightforward. I mean, I know there was a bill filed that we had to oppose last year. It kind of set the tone in an awkward way. Uh, the other thing, I just lost my page here. No comments, Commissioner Justice. Okay, I guess I have to use my brain and remember what I was asking. It'll come back to me, let me come back to you.
So, um, would you all be comfortable, uh, it just occurred to me when Commissioner Welch and Megan mentioned the, you know, option of looking at the opt-out in a year, should we send a letter?
I would be supportive of that. It, it still allows them to go forward, but-
Right.
If we have better information, then we can make a better decision.
To Tampa Bay Water representatives, would you be comfortable with that?
I want to make it clear what you're saying, because what, what Megan said was, I, I believe that we, we signed the agreement with the, with the opt-out provision, or in a year, but, because they're wanting something, they're wanting, you know, they're wanting an affirmative vote on Monday, they being the City of Tampa.
Right, but this may be something, an amendment you might pro-offer that I would like to send out if, if you think it's, I mean, if you think it's an attractive, I won't call it a compromise, but an attractive path that might still put in the protections but allow the project to move forward.
Yes, and, uh, so what that would mean is, there is currently that opt-out provision in this version that's set to go to the Tampa Water Board February eighteenth, but it, the language differs from our, um, county attorney's language. That was more of a vote-to-affirm language rather than a vote to decline. So I would say if you're, if you're planning to write a letter, that basically we would support it if that language was changed to this.
Kind of reaffirming an opt-in again-
Yeah, you have to opt-in again.
-in a year, as opposed to the, an opt-out.
Right, because the opt-out, it's very confusing. What is the criteria that does not have to be met in order for the opt-out? My understanding of the opt-outs, there had to be reasoning and justification to opt-out, whereas the opt-in is just an opt- whereas the opt-in is just an opt-in. If the, if the board doesn't vote to opt-in, it automatically dissolves.
Yeah.
So it's more of an affirmation as opposed to finding a reason to vote it down.
Yeah, I just want, one clarification with what Commissioner Peters said was, when I said it wasn't an environmental, that wasn't, it wasn't, it was the trigger of keeping the water from being dumped in Tampa Bay, that's not the reason that the project is being pushed. That, when I say it's not an environmental reason on their part to do it, I totally agree with Commissioner Peters that there is definitely some environmental issues to look at now for doing the project.
Mm-hmm.
And so that's a different, that's a different thing that I was referring to when I said it's not an environmental, it's not an environmental thing as far as saying.
Environmental motivation.
Yeah, for, on their part, yeah. We've, you know, they were supposed to get some nutrient credits or something, we took that off the table because that wasn't, that's not their motivation. So there's, there's a lot of other reasons, and frankly, I'm not sure I understand it because it's a very expensive process and expensive, a lot of time and energy that's going to be going into it in the next years to even see if it works for them. So it's kind of a, I'm not quite sure I get, but they can do what they want to do. We just, we're just kind of saying, if there's true regional benefit and it can be shown right now what it is, and for me, that's like fifteen to twenty million gallons a day additional so that we don't have to build new product and spend more money and more debt for all of the remaining folks, if they're taking that with them so that we don't have to provide that anymore, that's a real benefit to us. But short of that, you know, we're still trying to understand what those benefits are. And all of the project that Tampa Bay Water does, they go through this entire analysis before they bring it to the board for a decision.
Mm-hmm.
This is totally upside down. We're saying, okay, go forth.
Right.
Now go do all the work to see if it's viable.
Right.
And it's really just strange.
It's crazy. It's just not right.
What they're asking us to do, I don't know, I mean, we're trying to be partners on this, but, but, you know, again, it's just, it's just, it's just different.
Well, the suspicious part being that they, Tampa Bay Water could be paying for the feasibility study and they don't want that.
Yeah.
So I got a couple of comments. First off, that's not the only place that it puts the onus on Tampa Bay Water when it should be put on Tampa. So if we were to write a letter on just that one part, it's not accurate because there's several other places in which this red line puts the onus on Tampa Bay Water where it should be put on Tampa.
New red line.
The new red line.
Right.
So I think, and then there's other issues other than that, and I think if we were to send a letter saying that if we put it so that we switch it to how we wanted originally just for that one section, would be very misleading in saying that we're confident that you should move forward for the next year, because I'm not confident that we should be making that commitment. And when you look at the original interlocal agreement, the interlocal agreement was that they had this piece that was their asset that they didn't have to share, but the rest of it, the expansion of it, was going to be Tampa Bay Water's asset because they are the wholesaler, and they're taking that away and doing a reach and a grab, and so I've done a whole lot of work to catch up on everybody, but I think I'm almost there. So I think for, for us to send that letter talking about one part of an opt-out or opt-in is very misleading in the confidence on how we feel about this, this red line.
I agree with Kathleen.
I guess I just felt that if you had to in a year, as the proposed language reaffirms, it would give you the door opener, and in its entirety, I would think.
And I don't, I don't necessarily agree with that. I don't necessarily agree with your assumption.
Well, that I would want a legal opinion on. I'll put Don and Joe on the spot.
Don, Crawford County Attorney's Office, I'm sorry, Commissioner, I didn't hear exactly what you were getting, I understand about the letter and the one point, but.
You want to head up too? So this idea of this in a year that they would have to basically reaffirm their vote and reaffirm the MOU, would that, in your opinion, allow it to be totaled, every aspect of it discussed?
Well, every aspect could be discussed, but I think Commissioner Peters' point is well-taken. I mean, as a practical matter, you need to think about getting one more vote somewhere. I mean, I hate to count noses, but that's sort of what it is, and if it were all or nothing, well, maybe that little piece of, it has to come back in a year would be good, but Commissioner Peters' point is certainly well-taken, there's a lot of other issues that are there, and if either Tampa or the other members would take that as a signal that, well, we're okay with everything but, and, you know, that's a, I think that's a decision Commissioner Eggers and Commissioner Peters are going to have to sort of evaluate on Monday when the board meets. I mean, it's kind of hard to predict, I mean, half a loaf is better than no loaf.
Right.
But no loaf is, you know, that letter may be waived a couple of years and said, ah, you were okay with everything but this one, and you really got what you wanted, so, so don't worry.
Well, I guess, so, okay, so I guess I'll.
I didn't give you much guidance, I'm sorry.
Yes, you gave me good information, I would take back the idea of sending the letter, you know, expect that Commissioner Eggers and Peters would represent us well, but I guess what I would just propose is that somehow, you know, if you have, especially if you see you're on the losing side of things, if you have the ability to frame it with all the different things you would want to discuss in a year, you know, that could be, that might be the way to go. And you won't maybe know everything that you need to frame, but you're going to know most of it. Commissioner?
I have one other question. You know, the, the potential of this is, as Commissioner Eggers says, it creates a new lower-cost water source for the region, but there's a lot of science that needs to be proven before that happens. But on the other side, you don't, you know, the downside is that the customer base might be decreased if Tampa sells to other members, and I talked to Susan LaValle as well, and so in talking during the rate study briefing, Megan, you want to speak to the issue of Tampa is already selling to Hillsborough County?
Mm-hmm.
And maybe the TBW members know about that.
Yeah, we do.
How, how did that start?
Well, there's some area, well, there's some areas around the city of Tampa.
We don't have any infrastructure.
That we can't service.
Okay.
Sure, Megan asked, around the Hillsborough County, so there's pockets of Hillsborough County, and I believe there's thirteen interconnects where the city of Tampa currently does serve Hillsborough County customers. That's my understanding, either all or most of these customers, and don't quote me, I don't, I don't know, were in existence before the interlocal agreement.
Okay.
Was even put into place, so they were sort of grandfathered in. So how, if that customer base has grown, if that water consumption has grown over the past twenty years, I do not have that information, and if it's going to grow into the future, and that is the intent, is for Tampa to continue servicing those customers and increasing the demand there, then that's something I would think Tampa Bay Water needs to take a look at and evaluate.
So the, the sales you referenced yesterday are the ones that are outlined in the interlocal?
I can't say that with a hundred percent certainty, that would be a question for Tampa Bay Water, that are the customers being served today the same customers and demand that was served twenty years ago? They would have to get that information from Tampa and Hillsborough County.
And I guess the overriding question is, this project wouldn't increase Tampa water sales, too?
Well, it might.
Well, we don't know that, so that's another unknown.
I'm sure you all have talked about that, right?
Yeah.
I don't know that, that has not been affirmed or denied, that has not been a hundred percent addressed. So I can't say that it wouldn't or it would, but I would think that is something that, certainly that's a concern, that Tampa Bay Water would have to look at and evaluate.
Has Tampa ever stated their intent is that all of this water serves the city? Any new water would serve the city, or what, what's?
Well, they, they basically said they have this new wa, they're not going to have any extra water to sell to anybody, they've said publicly, okay? This is only to, you know, to make themselves, quote, drought-proof.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, the first paragraph here says it's, the recovery wells are being constructed by Tampa for the purpose of providing water for the exclusive use of Tampa and its retail customers. So, you know, right now, they have retail customers as Hillsborough County.
Yeah, I think, to clarify, Commissioner, there's, are thirteen interconnects which roughly sell to Hillsborough County, which Hillsborough County resells to their retail customers. Now, that was originally included in the amount of water that Tampa could develop from the river. And as you know, with redevelopment, it's hard to predict how fast those areas will expand, whether they'll be big sales or smaller sales. But in addition to those thirteen interconnections, I was told by Tampa attorney that approximately twenty-five percent of Tampa's customer base is in unincorporated Hillsborough. You know, as Hillsborough and Tampa developed, they entered into an interlocal agreement where Tampa served unincorporated areas. So there are large areas of unincorporated Hillsborough that are additionally served by Tampa, which, again, those areas may expand, may not expand, but, you know, philosophically, as Commissioner Eggers pointed out, that Tampa was to get the eighty-two, and then extra growth was to be provided by Tampa Bay Water, that's a little bit of a change in the paradigm, and those were, those service areas were identified in the interlocal agreement initially.
Are they still at the eighty-two?
They're still able to supply themselves from the river most years. In some years, when it's dry, they'll take upwards of six million gallons a day from Tampa Bay Water for a short period of time to cover during those droughts, and that's an amount of water that Tampa Bay Water plans for them.
So, you know, when they first started talking about this, it was about the expansion and, or the migration to South County, is that all unincorporated down there?
That's, South County's all unincorporated and all served by Hillsborough County utilities.
So that, yeah.
But the Tampa service area is, if you look at a map, roughly from, I think, seventy-five into the Tampa city limits. So it's, it's a big, big-sized area, and it was, I mean, when you look, one of the Hillsborough propos, or Penell, St. Petersburg proposals was that this water be contained only in the city of Tampa municipal boundaries, and, you know, that was the grenade in the henhouse, it was, oh, no, twenty-five percent of our customers are in unincorporated Hillsborough, we can't change that, but there's a lot of potential growth. You know, I think that goes back to Commissioner Eggers' point that it's a business decision, and Tampa has decided that they want to self-supply, and whether we're going to be able to throw ourselves in front of that bus or not is.
The only, and Commissioner Peters, I hear your concern about the investment between, and also Commissioner Eggers, between SWIFTMUD funding and delaying the Tampa Bay Water projects that would be serving South Hillsborough and East, and East Hillsborough?
Yeah.
And.
South and, yeah.
South and.
East, yeah.
However, if Tampa was able to self-supply and self-supply to the unincorporated area, it might take away the need for Tampa Bay Water to make capital investment in these other projects down the road.
There's, there's enough water in Tampa Bay Water right now, it's just trying to get the water to South County. So right now, they would, they could, one option would just be to, to build a pipeline from the water plant, our water plant down to South County. That's not going to increase our supply, but it would provide the water to South County. We don't need any additional supply for that.
For that.
But we will be needing some additional supply, which is why we're doing the long-range plan for an additional water supply source, and that could be a different project, if you want to get into all this stuff, the SHARP project, which is supplying water in a different way where you inject water into the ground in Point A by the Tampa Bay for, by the actual Tampa Bay, so it keeps saltwater intrusion out, and allows us to draw water further inland out of the wells that Hillsborough County has. And that would provide not only that South County water, but provide additional capacity. So that's a project that we're looking at, and all this has got a certain timing to be able to deliver, to your point, Commissioner Peters, it puts Tampa Bay Water under additional pressures, because again, our system is to make it drought-proof.
Right.
For everybody within our system, and that includes the city of Tampa. So there's still, again, a lot to understand, and when this, this other study, this, there's a study that was dated in June of eighteen, apparently our staff got it, our staff being Tampa Bay Water, got it, and did have a number, some questions that have not been answered. There are a lot of, as I said, technical questions. One of them was, and there's some, and I know that Matt was going to look into this, with the water that you put into the ground, right now, they're claiming that any water, and any of their reclaimed water, this TAP project, would not enter into any of our water, that's what they're claiming. And perhaps along the surface area of Hillsborough County, it wouldn't, but they don't understand yet, there's still questions that Tampa Bay Water apparently has that we're trying to get from them, how the model works underneath the stuff they're injecting and how it seeps over into any of other canals. So there's, in other words, I'm still saying there's questions, it gets back to the issue of, there's a lot of questions about the benefits truly being there or not, we don't know yet. And again, that's something that I think that Tampa Bay Water was willing to consider as one of their projects, but the city of Tampa wants it to be their project, so that's kind of where we're at, we're doing it a little bit backwards in the way Tampa, or Tampa Bay Water normally handles projects. I think that's a little bit unfair to put on Tampa Bay Water as well, and yet I'm pushing them a little bit to give me their recommendation, you know, what do you feel as professionals and the people that are, know all of this? And they haven't really done that yet. I said, be ready for questions on Monday, because really, we're not the, we're not the, you know, the scientists, we're not the, we're trying to understand policy implications, and we're trying to understand as much about that as we can, but, so anyway.
So, Madam Chair, do you remember a few years ago when we were dealing with that whole Raytheon plume issue?
Oh, yes.
Okay? Look, that was in the aquifer, and the original projections of where that was all going to end up were so different from where it all finally ended, and, you know, the aquifer is constantly shifting and moving like this, well, when it's doing this, so is all the water and things that are in there, they're moving too. So I, I just think, I think, I think it's just very dangerous to move forward when you have all these big questions that we don't know. I mean, there are serious issues that are about our water supply, though.
Okay, well, any other comments? I think we'll trust you all.
Good luck.
You've done so much homework and have so many.
Can I ask one other quick question?
Yes, sir.
What were Dr. Adams' concerns? I had an opportunity to work with her and really respect her opinion.
That, well, I'm going to try to pull, because I've gotten so much input from outside sources. Megan, I don't know if you are familiar with it more specifically, but I think she has, there truly is a number of questions with the actual purported benefits under which we would make such a decision, whether we've even considered this. I mean, we're opening a door here that our attorneys, for the most part, don't think it's precedent-setting, but still, none of us are going to be here in twenty years, there's going to be other people here, and there's going to be other legislators here, and the further you get from when it was originally done, the more diluted the memory gets about, you know, all of that stuff. So I think there's a lot of issues that, to those actual benefits, and, and, and it goes from the one claim about up to twenty million gallons a day from the Harney Canal, now we've kind of narrowed that down to about two.
What?
About two million gallons a day.
From twenty?
Yeah, well, it was up to twenty was the, was the comment, but when you get into it, it turned out to be two to maybe three or four million gallons a day.
That's a big difference.
So the big benefit would be that if, if we, if the city of Tampa gets completely self-supplying and the future demands of, I think it's fifteen to sixteen million gallons a day, then come back to us, so then you're talking about somewhere between fifteen and twenty million gallons a day, that would be substantive. But it's a long way before we're going to know that.
Right.
And so I just, again, even if you know that and you do that, you're making a decision to go down a path that could open the door for others, but there might be a benefit that, that weighs, you know, it's worth it, perhaps. But there might be a benefit that, that weighs, you know, it's worth it perhaps if there's a true twenty million gallons a day different benefit that we don't have to spend lots of money in new, you know, infrastructure and then drive that rate up higher. We're trying to keep that already elevated water rate as suppressed as we can. So, anyway, I, Megan?
But again, you know, if you are able to frame it and have a way of reaffirming it in a year with
Sorry.
a lot of the science and other details that you're going to need, that may be, that may be your only ability to get to, get some other votes. So, anyway. Well, thank you. I know, I just thought it was important to add this to the discussion so everybody knew what was coming and fully understood.
Sure. I can speak to the question that came up about what Dr. Adams had been speaking about. Essentially, she was referring to this number of structures within the canal and the Hillsborough reservoir that control the flow of water, of raw water. And she was speaking to just the levels and, and how, what the levels are of those structures and how that flow of water works. It was very technical. But I think the bottom line is, we, we had met with Tampa Bay Water to discuss that further and get into those details. One of the things that came out of that meeting was, and I think this is something to look at regardless of whether this MOU goes forward or not. Part of the provisions of the interlocal agreement call for a river management plan to be developed between the city of Tampa and Tampa Bay Water that, from my understanding, according to Tampa Bay Water, has never been developed. And that plan gets approved by SWF MUD. So, I think, especially if this MOU does move forward where there's a lot of questions about these structures and the control of flow and how city of Tampa controls the level and how Tampa Bay Water gets the benefit, rather than having that discussion happen at a board level, really needs to be a river management plan developed and approved by SWF MUD and kind of rubber stamped to where that can be referred to in any of these legal documents rather than, you know, specifically, you know, technical operating requirements called out in these MOUs and so forth. So, I'd recommend that we move forward with getting that river management plan established.
Yeah, because as you said, the more you got into that kind of conversation, the more detailed and complex it got. So, it was like conversation about even when a drought and the river goes down, you would think, well, we, and we can get more water then because it replenishes from springs more. When the, so, it really got complicated. But there's a, there's a gradient between the river's height and it's like, oh, my goodness, so.
Yeah, and it's not really appropriate to have that in an MOU.
She had a lot of concerns.
Right, so, I think if the river management plan, there's some leverage there because it was supposed to be developed as part of the interlocal agreement that the city and Tampa Bay Water have an agreement on. SWF MUD approves it so that everyone's getting the water supply and operating the reservoir and canal as they should. That would be more of a, a way to make sure that all these structures and the way it's operating is adequate to supply water to both entities. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the good information and being prepared and always prepared. We appreciate that greatly. Anything else?
Yes, Madam Chair, if we could, almost one year ago, almost to the minute of where we are right now is when seventeen people lost their lives in Parkland, Florida. And with your consensus, I'd like to take a moment of silence to recognize their loss.
Thank you. We've, there was a special moment this morning. Dr. Grego and the other superintendents across the state of Florida had all wanted at ten seventeen. So, we did a recognition at that point in time. And then my understanding is Dr. Grego also sent a message out to all the schools. But I think it was very appropriate. And thank you very much that we should do the same and, you know, send our sympathies to the families that are still suffering after their year of loss of their loved ones. And it's hopeful that something has changed in this legislative session.
Thank you.
Okay. Again, thank you, Commissioner Peters and Commissioner Eggers. Good luck.
Godspeed.
And thank you, Commissioner Peters.